He said he knows the turn of light.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Marty's running late, so let's go ahead and get started out here. Okay, good evening, welcome to the Apple Valley Town Council meeting of Wednesday, October twenty twenty one. We will have a call to order. You Paul Edison.
Here.
Del Beto's here, Kevin Sayer.
Here.
And Mike.
He's up here.
Whatever you want to call it. With a blessed head for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I've mentioned it before, but I truly appreciate the opportunity to be on that pledge of allegiance in our country still. Little call complete, Marty will be here, he's running a couple of minutes late. Any declaration or complex of interest in any of the following items?
No.
No, I have a declaration on line item two, although it's going to be tabled later point. I know the applicant and have known him for close to twenty fifteen, twenty years, him and his family. That's the only conflict of interest there. Mayor's town update. I'm going to say my, my, my update, my mayor's update until we get to some of these other items. I've got some comments that the attorney wanted me to share, and he's out on his elk hunt this week. So he'll, we'll have some comments to share then, we will. One report that we have been able to successfully drain the water tank on Rome way to begin the repair of the hole that was about a half inch in width. We, once we drained it down, we were able to inspect it from the inside as well. And it was only about a half inch wide. I know the report that went out and said it was a quote massive hole, large enough to put your fist through, which was not accurate.
Which would be sixteen thousand gallons per hour.
Sorry?
Which would be about sixteen thousand gallons per hour. If it was this size, which is almost three hundred.
Six hundred.
I did calculations.
Yeah.
The big number.
Hundred gallons an hour.
Every morning.
If ever so. Yeah, which obviously was not the case. We did receive, I'm going to say close to a dozen phone calls when we began to drain the tank. So it's good to see residents being concerned and calling in. Okay. There's no need for a public hearing tonight, correct John? So no public hearing. Discussion actions on line item one, discussion of possible action, Jefferson Canyon Development Agreement. I'm going to let Marty kind of come dragging in here, I think, I'm pretty sure I saw him pulling in here. Mr. Iverson is here this evening. If you'd like to come up, Mr. Iverson, we're going to have a couple of questions for you. I want to report that our attorney and their attorney have been working back and forth over this thing over the last probably sixty, ninety days. Trying to get this thing finalized, they're both entities have reported that they're comfortable, they're just. Welcome, Marty. And I was giving a report on the Jefferson agreement, Marty. That both, both attorneys have been working on this feverish over the last couple of months, they've got it pretty well down to where it is. We've, we've got a couple of verbiage we need to change tonight that we'll get to for a moment. Primarily line item two point zero zero acquisition dedication phase one water by developer. Developer acknowledges it has an obligation to dedicate water to the district sufficient to service the property. Phase one of the developer master plan for the property includes approximately one hundred seventy single family resident units. And developers negotiating with a seller require one hundred acre feet of water rights, which will be dedicated to district to service the phase one residents. However, the, and section two point zero one clarifies that developer understands that the district's current policy is to permit one new residential connection per one acre foot of water. So developer will therefore maintain connectivity for initial one hundred units in phase one and not one hundred and seventy, so he'll need to come up with another seventy units. And he's fully aware of that, correct?
Yeah, we have, we have contract ready for that to be signed, so as well.
Okay.
This week.
Down in section two point zero three two, the parties recognize that there will be a benefit available as a result of effluent from the use of phase one water rights makes available additional reuse water, which the district does not currently have. That's the first sentence we want to talk a little bit about, Mr. Iverson, is, is that correct? We do not have, but through the process of this development project, when that water generated, I think we've missed the fact that we own that water when it comes out of that deal. So the way it's worded is that you have the right to it and you absolutely should, you elect to purchase that back from us. It does not belong to you.
The reuse water?
The effluent water does not belong to the developer, it belongs to the district.
Okay.
And your attorney, our attorney, we're talking about this like yesterday afternoon via the mountaintop. So the district anticipates that it may make use of such reused water to provide additional water service to the property. And that portion of the statement is correct, the district will make use of, of that, but it'll be on a purchase basis. The developer agrees to waive any claim to the effluent or reuse water originally from phase one of the property and assign any of its rights to claim such water to the district. So you guys are saying that we own it, but in phase, in that first sentence, it doesn't specify that you have to give a nice little green dollar bill for it, it just says that you're entitled to it. Okay? That makes, that makes sense to you?
Well, not quite.
Okay.
I'm entitled to it, but.
You're entitled to buy it. But the way the first sentence states, the first sentence suggests that you own it.
All right, so you want, you want to change that sentence?
Yeah, we, we want to make sure that verbage is correct, that it's clear that we own that water. Water, not the developer. Okay? It goes on to say the developer agrees to waive any claim to that little water or reuse originally from phase one of the property and assign any of its rights or claims to such water to the district as consideration for receiving an additional seventy units of water connections. That's not the case, because it's our water, we own that water. There are a couple of different things that, that, you know, that we've talked about that we can work on. And, and part of one of those is we talked about how do we gain, how do we get some water introduced to recharge our system to get some state credits? This, this verbiage does not address that. We'll make sure that we're very clear on that, because you and I have talked about going down that possible avenue.
Yeah, that's a long, it's a four or five month process.
Longer than that, I've taken three years to get through it before, so.
Anyway, like you said, I've got a contract for the other seventy.
Okay. And I, and, and I know you reported that to me, I just want to make sure the council and the public is fully aware of that. That we, that we're not expecting you to own and operate trade that water out. So as it continues on, as a condition of receipt of said connections, developer will provide to the town and district written opinion of a water engineer. So all that section is underlined, we're going to X out of there as agreement between your attorney and our attorney. Okay, okay, so our attorney is suggesting that we go ahead and approve this, this, this development agreement contingent upon him verifying and approving final verbiage. He's pretty comfortable with it, he just wants a little bit more clarification on those dividers. I think, I think council has that same concern, correct? Is there any other points of interest of that you guys want to address on that water?
Yeah, Kevin.
Mike, good. Okay. Line item two, two oh four is a conditional, conditioned upon the receipt of engine opinion, which goes along with that would also be vacated, because in a sense, what you're saying is, is that if your engineer were to, you're, you're asking the town to accept the opinion of your engineer that this would yield X amount of acre feet credit, and it's not your engineer that we need to accept, we need to accept that of the state. So in, should you elect in future to go through that process, it does need to go to the state, whatever the state needs that, that credits are, then those credits will be reported at that time. Okay?
Based on actual gallons.
Based on actual real true gallons.
That came out.
Right? The next item was in line of two oh five. Or the district and town agree that at some date in the future, the developer may trade other water of similar or better quality to district or receive back the right to use the effluent and reuse water from the phase one water rights for the purpose of irrigation of the planned golf course or other approved uses. Again, we're talking about going through that credit program, should you like to do that at your expense and not accept the town. So we want to make sure the town's not absorbing any of that. Then the last item is line item three oh one, developer agrees to build a single one man gallon water tank at the site southern end of the approved master plan of the property as part of the required infrastructure improvements for phase one of the property. But the town and district agree that the developer may provide a metal tank instead of a concrete one subject to regular review and approval construction drawings. We researched this out and we've visited with the water district and we've visited with other towns in the, in the community. The general consensus is that even though water tanks are now lined with polyurethane liners, current polyurethane code is breaking down with treatment to the water. So we're finding it very, very hard to support a water tank made of steel. We know that we, I'm going to speak my perspective for a moment. My perspective is that we, we approved your PID funding as a basket tranche of money that you would receive all upfront and then you would be required to build a one man gallon concrete water tank out of that. I understand fully that your funding has been approved, has been proved in tranches now instead of a large bucket, am I correct on that? I don't know the totality of phase one, but I know.
Neither.
But it, it does not appear that phase one would be sufficient enough to support a one man gallon water tank and the infrastructure for your, for your project.
It would, a steel tank, but it won't concrete.
Correct, but I, I think we're, I think our position is that we have, we're just really, really uncomfortable with doing a steel tank. And it's, I was encouraged by it because they were now polyurethane lined. And I've been building polyurethane products for forty years and have never had any problem with it. But what they are discovering in most recent trade programs are finding is that even HDBE pipe is now breaking down due to the chlorination of the water. Now, our town doesn't currently chlorinate, but it will in the future, I'm sure, as we, as we continue to develop our water system. So we're seeing that, that HDP pipe that's been really in circulation for twenty years is starting to go through its life cycle and get toward the ends of it. They're now discovering that there is a breakdown of that. So they've changed the component structure of how to make that pipe, but it's going to be fifteen, twenty years again before we see if it works. So our concern level is, if we go with a polyurethane liner for that tank, it may be fifteen years and we discover that it still doesn't work, and that's where our fear factor is. So we'd like to figure out some other means and not go with the water tank, we're just not comfortable with it. And I know that you and I talked about that, and it was, and it was Mr. Fisher who had actually introduced that to, to you as, to, through me as a suggestion. And I was excited about it because of the polyurethane, but in further research, it turns out that it may not be quite as good as we thought. So we've got some grave reservations about putting that in, so we want to stick with the main gallon concrete tank. You have asked for a temporary half million gallon tank because of the funding structure. And that's probably what we need to discuss if we're interested in entertaining or working with the applicant to see if there's a, a hybrid that could be done.
Could we do that in the same location and just build? It'll be a million gallon tank, but it's two half million, and then later we'll have the other half million too.
Are you okay doing the concrete?
Yeah, we can do it, I can do a half million, as opposed to doing two tanks.
Do the two tanks or one tank?
Just one tank.
Just one tank.
Go higher.
Go higher.
Right.
I'm wondering how you do that with current users on the system? Because you got a half million and you've got houses, you have businesses or whatever tied to that system.
Well, two, two half million gallon tanks doubles the cost.
Right.
And we have to put a road as.
Well, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah.
I just, I hope you could explain how that would possibly work.
You don't. I, I've seen it, I've seen them add on the tank, there is, there is an interruption process that occurs because of contamination to the water. It requires you to do so, but it's also a short period of time. I don't know that our current system would support your subdivision, I think is what Marty's saying.
What is the construction time on the tank? So if you build half million, what would that look like? I mean.
I, we haven't, we haven't engineered it yet, so we don't have a price to pay, you don't have it. But I mean, there's got to be a way to add to it later, even if we have to put some kind of, you know, steel container there and build it up and then pull that out.
I guess pretty, that's just getting pretty pricey.
Yeah.
The other option is, is that we're still in need of another half million gallon steel tank for storage and fire storage. We wouldn't entertain that anywhere.
I'm not crazy about the idea, it was the problem, we have a little steel right now, so.
Right.
But in the east, and if that liner breaks down with use of chlorine, it seems like we're saying yes to a future problem. But you know, I'm, I'm okay to.
Can that liner be replaced?
It can be, yeah.
Probably a spray in, this is a spray.
It's a spray in, yeah.
So they spray it in.
So if the major.
Repair would be spraying again. They just have to drain the tank, spray it and fill it up.
The, the manufacturer's projections of it is a fifty year lifespan now over, over the previous thirty five years, so. But that's also manufacturers, you know, it's like, I'm trying to sell my product, yeah, if I work, you know, that thing.
Does anybody know how old these tanks are?
Well, over forty years, they're placed in about nineteen eighty two, right along with their.
And we don't have any lining on these tanks?
None.
They're pushing their life expectancy.
They are, so if we discovered, if polyurethane lining gets you another fifteen years, as, you know, as they suggest it does, then you'd expect these new tanks to be fifty six years.
Would you be able to share with us the breakdown of the money and how it's distributed to you? In other words, you have this first phase PIB one.
Yeah, we don't know what we're getting yet, I mean, it's.
Hundred dollars.
I've got a stack of documents that they, I've got over a hundred and seven thousand dollars just to get to this point with this pit, so I've got to get it done.
That was my, my channel might have funded already, so it hasn't happened yet.
No, but they're close.
Hey, I, if I understand correctly, you're waiting for this development agreement before you call your funding.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, it's a bit of a chicken and egg scenario, Matt, and so I represent the, the district. Until the water is secured, we, we can't close on the financing, so.
Right.
I was just going to say, hey, I think I could probably pull up the list of the, of the infrastructure costs that are expected, if that would answer your question.
You know, I was just curious of.
Well, I've got a list of the infrastructure.
Division of that, so you know, we, here's the deal, is if we say yes to anything other than the very gallon concrete tank, then phase two comes, if it comes, first off, because we always have to look at that reality that phase two may never come. We're stuck, and then we're stuck with.
Here's a possibility, we have in this, we have the Aqua Tech sewer system. And that, that's a, that can be phased, and we have like four hundred fifty thousand dollars in the first pit for the first phase of that. If we deferred that, because we're not going to need sewer until we get homes, we could add that to the money I've got set aside for the tank, and we probably have enough to do it.
Talking about the million dollar concrete tank.
What are you going to do, I mean, usually you've got to build homes eventually to start.
So I understand it, we've also got a, we've also got a lender from New York who's out here before the pandemic. And they've gotten back to us, and they're very interested in coming back and getting this thing going. They're talking about forty million dollars.
I guess, I guess I'm going to take some of my merit out of offer a minute, go sit down in the audience, and as a resident, I, I feel like as a resident, the council and the mayor's office is doing what they can do to solve your financial problems. But I don't, I, I as a resident, I don't, I don't want to see our town do that.
You've got to, you've got to approve a water system anyway.
I understand that, but I'm, I guess I'm, I feel like I'm trying to find ways to help you find money to finance your project, and, and while we've been.
Asking for things.
Well, I know we do, but there's things that we want, need.
You, you are going to drive the bulldozer up the hill, aren't you?
I'll help you, absolutely will.
I, I also want to, you know, I, you say it's going to cost more money to build two half million gallon tanks.
Right.
You know, but set that aside for a second, if just building a half million gallon tank helps out financially and we push the second one to a phase two, you know, even though it costs more money in the long run, does it help you?
Is that better for you?
At least we're getting the quality.
And let, and let me rephrase, because I want to make sure that I throw in my two cents to this comment, because I agree with the comment, but let's arbitrarily say that we built, built a five hundred thousand gallon tank, and it was just too problematic to continue upwards, and we ended up building a second one side by side. I've, I've talked to engineer, and there's not an engineering challenge with it, but what does that do to you?
Well, the problem is, we've got sites for both of them. We have the one up on top of the hill at the back.
Yeah.
Where the million gallon is going to go.
Yeah.
We had one here on this corner out here, which is.
Temporary.
No, it wasn't temporary, yeah.
From our perspective, it was going to be a temporary site, we want to see the main gallon tank at the back.
Okay, I didn't realize that was going to be temporary, it's a concrete tank we had planned. That's going to cost a lot of money to do that, take a road up that hill and.
Is it a half million or a half a million?
I, I guess I would.
Do another half million at the back.
I guess I, what I was trying to say was, I was envisioning is that we do a one man gallon tank in the back, and that was it.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So.
That would be the best scenario.
Yeah, and I, like I say, I think if we, if we, if we postpone funding the sewer system until we get some other funding, then we'll have enough money to do it anyway.
But it puts you in a position where you can't go work on the sale homes then.
I got to, it's going to take me years or so to put in roads, utilities, and so forth.
I understand it, I'm just looking at, I'm changing, I'm also looking at how you generate your revenue and.
I understand, like I said, we are close to getting our financing, your whole project.
How is, what kind of road are you talking about to access that tank?
Our agreement requires him to build an all purpose road, an all weather road.
Yeah, it's a twenty six foot wide.
Road base.
So it's not paved and gutted and all that stuff?
It's in phase two or three, it is.
Yeah, it won't be the, won't be for the first thing.
Right. And that's what I was wondering.
Ultimately, yes.
If we can help in that way to require less.
Right, yes, because we've got home sites up on top, we've got.
So it really comes down to do we want to entertain a, a steel tank that we can recollect and use, or do we want to go with two half million gallon tanks in stages?
Or a half million gallon tank and postpone the sewer.
What would be your replacement of the sewer if you did that?
What would I?
What would be our replacement to the sewer system?
It would still be the same, still be the same system, it'd just give us about a year before we start, because we're not going to be building homes for a year.
Okay.
I think I'd rather do that, wouldn't you?
Absolutely, yeah.
I'd rather see the tank go in, sewer's not going to do us any.
Right, no, exactly, and, and, and like you say, I'm not going to need the sewer until I build homes. I've been building homes for at least a year.
Okay.
I can live with that.
I can live with that too, so.
So let's change that to.
Okay, so we'll stick with the main gallon tank and Matt, I'm sure there's access water tank, I've, they can create one water for the developer prior. So there is no information here about the septic?
No, that's. I just have a question real quick.
Yeah.
Go forward on three oh one.
Three oh one.
Are we like taking that out or changing it, because it says, but the town and district agreed to develop a right of passage.
Three oh one.
Is that just going to be taken house?
No, we're going, yeah, we're going to take it, we're not going to, we're going to go with the water, a, a concrete tank, so, a, a steel tank.
And just a quick question on.
Concrete?
Yeah, concrete, yes.
I have a quick question on the road too, I, Marty brought it up, I was reading through this and.
Which section?
Through, three dash oh.
Two, okay.
About the all weather road, twenty five feet, and then you even brought up the fact that it wouldn't mention that you paved curving, curving out.
And lined.
Second and third basis.
And white.
And at that point, is that dedicated over to the town?
Of course.
And we have free access, the water department has free access.
It's a public road. Even that's an all weather road, it would still have access.
Would be.
Because of the public utility. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve this contingent of on.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Your fun.
Uh, just on the back of four point zero zero, and it talks about agreements between the parties and shall be binding on the and in year to the benefit of all successors. But it gets down to.
When, where?
Well, when we get to the next page.
Four hundred, just before five.
Yeah, just before five.
Yeah.
It talks about notwithstanding the foregoing upon the sale and development of subdivided, subdivided and developed unit a lot to a third party, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, and you can correct me if I am. Shush, unit or lot shall be released from and no longer burdened by the provisions of this amendment. So is that, I'm reading that, and I'm thinking, does that mean this gentleman could take a portion, he can sell it to another contractor or developer, and they're not accountable to any of the provisions?
No, I say portion, but the entirety of it, because there's no portion identified in this, it's the whole, he can sell his entire development.
And they will still be contract, contractually.
They will, absolutely, yeah, they will be, they will be bound by everything that, that's in this agreement, yes.
And I can comment on that if I can, if I can be helpful, that, I believe that provision is actually in the original development agreement as well, and I just.
Well, that was before my time, so it's still coming before me now, so.
No, I understand, but, so what that's referring to is because it says subdivided and developed units, it's talking about a finished lot.
Lot.
Yeah, so, so in other words, when someone comes and, and they're looking at a lot or a home to buy in the project, and they look at their title report, this will come up on their title report. But that provision tells them that this is not their obligation, because they're not the developer. We're, we're, by that point, we're past that, so that's the purpose of that provision.
And, and the reason that is, because the PID puts basically, for lack of a better term, a tax on that lot that they are liable for. Once they sell that lot, the new homeowner is.
Is liable for it.
Right, it'll be an IP, an item on the annual apartment tax bill.
Okay? All right, so let me restart this again. I make a motion that we approve this as council has directed under the conditions that the one million gallon water tank will go in as a concrete tank, and if the verbiage would be corrected and informed correction by our attorney, approved by attorney, and notified by two council members, if such verbiage is correct, then the development agreement can be signed and executed.
One second.
Clarification line for, for just a discussion, sake before we vote.
Okay.
There's no mention in your motion to clean up some language in this for the effluent water and so forth. Is there something we can say in that motion that might?
Yes.
Check up with, that might help clean that up a little bit?
Yes.
We do have some things we discussed, he agreed to, but it's not in the motion.
Okay. Let me amend that. To amend that and add to that motion, I also make a motion that we allow the attorney to remove and any verbiage pertaining to the development and credits of effluent water to the, available to the developer. I need that cleaned up, doesn't it, man?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a second, so vote, vote again with Paul.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Then we'll, we'll force this back to the attorney when he decides to come down off of the mountain, he'll make those corrections with you. We'll recirculate this to the council, and once we all are comfortable that it is, that it has been corrected, then the mayor will report this.
Okay, can I ask a question there?
No. Good.
Yeah, we have our, we have our purchase agreement for the water rights, which also includes the water district as a party because of the dedication that's going to take place.
Right.
Any other action required for that, if, if, once we're settled on this, are we okay to go ahead with that agreement as well?
So according to your agreement, we'll serve letter with, with the district, and I'll, and I've asked him to double check this, but you should be good to go with that, the action should have been taken place. Um, and I'll, and I've asked him to double check this, but you should be good to go with that, the action should have been taken place. But he is double checking it cuz he questioned the same thing.
Okay.
So until we get that clarification from attorney, we won't move on.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna know, I just wanna make sure that we can put both agreements in front of you when, when we got this squared away, so.
I'm sure you would. You know, you can urge him to come down off that mountain, he hasn't got it yet, I understand, so.
Before you sit down, I do have just a question, about the golf course or other approved uses, what might that feel like?
Just landscaping.
Yeah, landscaping, we're doing a four lane divided highway up to the golf, to the inn, to the lodge. And so we'll have landscaping there, both sides and the middle.
And you would not be putting like the golf course or anything in until you have the adequate water to sustain that, so we're not taking it out of the wells?
Well, we have to buy, if we have to get other water, we'll do it, that's, that's our second phase. First phase is gonna be the, Billy Tumany Nation, which is right on the corner out here, across from the gas station. Second phase will be two, two neighborhoods, the lodge and the golf course.
He also owns a well, that's right.
We've got a well, we get a mighty few of them, so.
He's entitled to purchase water, either potable or affluent, to do his irrigation with, and that'll be his property.
When we started this thing, we didn't have any idea about all this happening, so.
That was a long time ago.
Yes.
Nine years, that was back in Rick Moser's day.
Thirteen years ago. Okay.
I'm not getting any older.
Any other questions for Mr. Hodges? I have a favorite ask, can you put that stagecoach in up front so we can at least see it till you're ready to move it along?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you guys, we appreciate it.
Okay, so.
Okay, line item two, discussion of possible actions on zone change application from Smithsonian Estates applicant. Lab McDonald for lot A V dash thirteen twenty-nine dash B, as in Bravo, some people have gotten this property mixed up with. Thirteen twenty-nine. New, I think it is, I can't remember for sure, these are two separate parcels, we are gonna table this because we did not get the plan commission with this last time. They do wanna bring you attention to what, uh, they are working on. Um, one of the biggest challenges we had with the Travis and Lively Wells project up on top of the hill. Although it's limited to twenty-five lots, is the usage of runway and especially in the curb. Uh, so Mr. McDonald in his application is working with, uh, Travis's Wells project. To realign, uh, and redirect some roads that would allow Travis Wells' property to go out to the north as opposed to runway. They have also acquired easement right of ways out to Main Street for yet a second access to Main Street. As well as, um, easement right of ways to come back to what is Googler Way, or who is it, Googler Way, Googler Avenue? Googler, Googler Street, everybody knows where Googler is, right? And come down off of the hillside and buy tanks and tie into Googler. Which would allow basically everybody on top of this hillside up here to have access to the north. And out asphalt roads all the way to Highway fifty-nine, be the two developed projects. And no longer have an impact on runway at all, and it doesn't mean that nobody's not gonna use it, that, that, that's not what it means. It means if you build them a four lane road or a two lane road, for them to go out of, it's a shorter distance, easier distance, and they still come down runway, it's still above the roadway. But this will remove the traffic from that entire hill, it'd also allow runway to be tied into this to Google. Google Road, Google Avenue, and no longer be a one-way dead-end street. The second issue that we have discovered up there was that the size of the pipeline on runway. Was in fact not what it was indicated on plans, uh, Mr. Harris thought it was a twelve inch water line. Uh, I, I, I had, it had been reported to me years ago that it was possibly a ten inch water line, but it turns out it's an eight inch water line. So, sorry. So part of this, part of their offsites, we're gonna push as far as we possibly can, but we're gonna try to get that. That water line also upside, if there's any way to get to it, but a minimum, get a new road and twelve inch distribution lines out of, out of work.
And it's going somewhere to where?
So if you were looking at. Uh, this is Mike's house where the curb is and the asphalt ends right here, here's what two tanks set. His property sits right here, and this is the church property, that roadway comes in here and ties into Googler and goes out to Main Street. So then it continues to here up and halfway picking that, so you have an asphalt road from the tiny cabins all the way to there. So now you have a collector road, we no longer are reliant. Yeah, we are no longer reliant upon all the people living in this part of Apple Valley to be able to have to come in and out of Chevron's. Roadway, uh, gateway, and across a bridge that, you know, obviously in the event of an emergency were to fail, we couldn't get out of there. So that's, that's what they're working on, so they'll be back in front of the planning commission, I think it's the third, isn't it, John? Third or fourth? Third, third, okay, so, uh, they'll continue forward with that, so that's tabled for this season. Um, line three, discussion of possible action, preliminary plat- application for Smithsonian Estates applicant, that's the same one that is tabled. I think it's the third, is it, John? Third or fourth? Third, third, okay, so, uh, they'll continue forward with that, so that's tabled for this season. Um, line three, discussion of possible action, preliminary plat- application for Smithsonian Estates applicant, that's the same one that is tabled. Um, line four, discussion of possible actual Nowood RV LLC development agreement. Tiger Guard here with us this evening, if you'd like to come forward. I think our biggest issue here, um, there were a couple, or a couple of issues that've come up. Um. There's been some suggestions and questions about the validity of this project, whether or not it received a zone change. Whether or not received the preliminary plat, whether or not received the final plat. Uh, there was even some questions to suggest that it may have been improperly sold, uh, I think. Mayor Lisbonby has satisfied me that that's been corrected and up to date and that it was sold. Sold approved by the previous owner and approved for commercial, and he bought it as such. Um, I have had, I've got a couple of grammar requests as well as a, uh, um, state records request on that. So we're pulling that information to port it up, but I wanna make you aware that that was the question, but we seem to be, we seem to be okay on that. So the big ticket item for Mr. Tiger Guard is our access lane onto Highway fifty-nine. In the agreement, he asked for a one-year, um. One-year extension from the time he received his certificate of occupancy before he had to put that in. I reminded him this afternoon that we approved this project largely subject to that lane going in. Because we removed the access through Chevron parking lot, he understands that and has agreed to. Uh, change the verbiage on section one, where it says. If no plans for future developments are in place by the time Nowood eighty-five LLC has been issued. A certificate of occupancy, then Nowood LLC has one calendar year to finish the highway improvements. Nowood LLC acknowledged that it has one year of the time UDOT issues a conditional access permit to complete the highway improvement. Um, two things, we've been working with Matt Rhodes from UDOT to, um, I don't wanna say you hold your, 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 your permit hostage. But that's sure that's what it feels like to you, we just wanna make sure that before your access permit was granted, that, uh. That this, 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 uh, this documentation was cleaned up and updated, um, so he also understands that, uh. Uh, I made him a work, oh, my, he was the Hank Cliff, uh, Hank's construction drawings, once we reviewed the construction drawings for. Uh, uh, Jepson Canyon actually did not involve the north side of the highway. And it was our concern that one or the other may go do some work on the highway only to have it be torn out by the next developer sixty days, thirty days, forty-five days later. It turns out that they'll not impact either one, uh, Hank's most likely gonna be staying on the south side and you'll be staying on the north side, so he's agreed to go ahead. And put that in before CO can be distributed, so I'm gonna, is anybody got any questions on this?
I, I have one other thing I wanna bring up on number two, cuz I, number two, I have an issue with this date on the developer agreement. Um, it talks about the sewer connection, uh, and it talks about the parks RV subject system going in. Um, the part that I have a hard time with is the reimbursement, if, if you're gonna build a sewer system, then build your sewer system, put it in. I, I, I've, I've owned property in the past that was on sewer system, and when the town went through and said, you're gonna hook up the system. I haven't paid for that system, I no longer had the convenience of not paying that monthly fee on my septic tank. I had to, had to hook up to the sewer system, and that was totally at my cost, okay, and so I don't agree. With, uh, giving reimbursements to have gone to a sub, to a, a town system down the road. Um. Just because that system goes in five years, maybe ten years, now I do. Would accept if we do something like that, where we're not doing any reimbursement, that you have X amount of years to put in at the town system to go in. I, I just don't agree with that town having to pay, pay out the money for the sewer system when it's coming into that. RV park, and correct me if, if you have a different idea, I'm willing to listen, but I, that's one of my.
But you, you would still require me to connect to the town system, is that right?
I think eventually, I think, I think you could put in, the system, the town system went in. Because of another project, and that system went in to eventually connect.
Right.
Everybody up to it, I mean, you know, the big, big issue always is contamination to our groundwater and to our water.
Right.
Um, I think when someone goes and pays for a septic system, if the town eventually does build the need to put in a sewer system. Then there should be a time limit to that, right? Can't, I'm not gonna sit here and say what that should be.
Right.
Uh, I know, just listening to Hilldale and Colorado City's problems with their septic system, their, their, their ponds out here. That there's problems with not having enough water going into those ponds.
Sure.
And they're a much larger, uh, town than we are. Uh, with more people on use probably with that, that system.
Right.
Um, so, and then when you look at the cost of it, I, I just, I just have a problem with that part of it.
I guess I just would ask a question, are you guys aware, I know, I know, uh, Mayor Beto is, are you guys aware that. Um, per the size of our project, it's not just a normal standard septic system, like we're having to put in. Um, a wastewater treatment, uh, equipment as part of our septic design. Which is why, I mean, that, and that's gonna be an additional, somewhere between, we're still trying to figure that out with the state, but it's gonna be around a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. Worth of equipment.
Right.
Which, which, again, we're working with the division of, of, um, environmental quality state on that, uh, to meet their standards. So that was the whole thing is, if we're gonna pay that upfront cost for that investment of the system. And then be asked two, three years down the road to abandon that.
Twenty years or ten years, fifteen years before we ever have a, a large sewer lived in that we're operating off of. And, and my, my personal feelings, I'd rather see this stay a smaller town and not.
Sure.
Not even grow to the Hilldale, Colorado City size, sure myself, that's personally, but.
Right.
You know, growth's gonna happen, but.
I think.
But I, I think it's unfair to, if you put in all that money into your septic system, then, you know, a couple years down the road, we're gonna change that, make you put that in there. But then, in here, we're stating that we're gonna take in part of that cost as reimbursement back to you, and I, I just have a hard time with that part.
I think the other thing to clarify too, Dan, is that, um, even though we require you to tie into the system. I, I, I doubt, and I, and I, and I talked to, uh. You know, I forgot, just grabbed his name up in the state, Robert, Robert. At DQ, I don't think that we can ask you to tie into it till the life of your system has expired.
Okay.
And I know we provide that option in residential typically, sure, any town does. So I don't think it's a matter of you spending three hundred thousand dollars and then six months later, we're gonna toss it down the drain.
Right.
With no unintended.
Right.
So it, it wouldn't occur until your system was, was, uh, had expired, you got used to life, so if we put in that system. You know, you're gonna get twenty or thirty or forty years out of that system anyways.
Yeah, I mean, exactly, I just don't want to.
We'll all be dead by then.
Probably, I'm living to a hundred and ten.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's why that is in there though, I mean, it's not, it's not, uh, in there to try and take advantage of the town. It's just, it's just in there, it's in there because I'm gonna put this, again, and it's not your requirement, it's the state's requirement that they're asking me to put in this additional equipment.
And I can understand that.
Right, and so it's like, if I put that in, and then the town, two, three years, two, two, three years later, whenever the sewer system's. Sure.
Well, if his system is that level and it's not putting out any pollutants in the groundwater.
Yeah, and just.
If I understand right, the system you're talking about, that you're recommending that water go back to, to blood life or whatever from that sewer system, if I'm correct.
It could, it could be used for that, that certainly, but, and just so we're all on the same page here, the requirements that we're being asked to meet. Is we're, we're pulling contaminants out of that water that is better than Utah's drinking water. It's forty percent great.
Yeah.
You know, where Utah's drinking water standards is that they allow up to ten milligrams per liter of nitrogen in the water. We're being asked to reduce ours down to six and a half, so, and the cost to do that is extensive.
Oh, I understand, so.
I do, and that's why I just brought it up, and I just wanted, I want that to change a little bit on number two, cuz.
You can always get in other business.
Okay, so.
I.
So how would, how would we? Yeah, how would like, okay, but.
Go ahead, I was gonna space your question.
Oh, I was just gonna say, how, how do we need to, to, uh, change the verbiage there?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna identify it from the, in section two where it begins, if the town. If the town of Apple Valley requires Nowood eighty-five, from that point forward, we're going to eliminate that from the, from this agreement. When we get to that point, okay, sorry.
Um, so back to the, uh, one year, um, I was a little confused the way you explained it, um. Are we waiting a year or are we not waiting a year?
No, CO will not be granted until. The lane is put in.
Correct.
Okay, so that verbiage will change to that.
Yeah, yeah, we're just striking that.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the African?
No, I was just worried about the lane change and.
Yep.
That's probably all in the way.
And again, and speaking with, uh, Mr. Hall, that, uh, his recommendation was that we move this forward with the, uh, uh, with the same, same correction of verbiage. So I make a motion that we approve the developer agreement, subject to the verbiage change granted, approved by, uh, our attorney. Um, circulated to the, uh, council members to change section one, where it begins, if no plans for future developments are in place. To replace the balance of that with no certigative occupancy will be issued until the changed lane is constructed. And approved by UDOT. Um, then in line item two, that we vacate where it begins, and if the town of Apple Valley requires Nowood eighty-five. To vacate the balance of that verbiage, um, upon clarification and approval of our attorney. Then I make a motion that we approve this development agreement, um, and, uh, allow to be moved forward and, uh, and, uh. And executed by the mayor, we have a second.
Second.
Vote again with Paul.
Hi.
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 Okay, vote courage fighting zero, thank you. Okay. I line five, discussion of possible actions on change application from SF one to RE ten applicant. Wilson for lot A V dash thirteen, let, dash U. Um, there's also some questions that have been presented to the town about this project in the form of, was it properly. Uh, transferred, was it properly recorded, and is the actual zoning SF one? Or is it SF, uh, RE, RE ten, sorry. Um, one of the other questions that was brought up as well is, does this. The concern is that this applicant, should he receive the zone change, would then have the ability to have an excess. Was the word they use, uh, I, I got two, two questions, so I'm gonna use the word excess, maybe one of both of them, but. To an excess number of animals on this property, uh, in an area of town that doesn't support that many apple, uh, animals. Because the subdivision adjacent to it has a limitation of four horses, a two-point system. In those one acre lots where this property would not be, would not be restricted to that. Mr. Wilson is here, he'd like to come forward.
My age today.
Okay.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, you have a.
I was, uh, just gonna, uh, say RE ten, um, as we've already defined all that, as far as animal usage goes.
Yep.
Yes, and we have no intention of putting animals anyway, except maybe a cow or maybe a horse for my daughter eventually, maybe if, uh. If she learns how to do all that stuff.
Concern with it would be is, uh, does it on the application, it says ag use garden.
Yes, it's not for, it's not for like piggies and, and some, some people suggest pigs, of course, I'm, they say.
Before we get to the ag, I'm gonna go back to the animals, comment on this comment, or your comment. I appreciate that you today probably only wanna put a cowl there, but if you sold your ground tomorrow, the next person may not have your same view, so that's my.
Yes, I truly understand that, and, and I'm, I'm, I was contemplating whether, you know, you could put that in there as far as. Yes, I truly understand that. And, and I'm, I'm, I was contemplating whether, you know, you could put that in there as far as if land is sold subject to.
No, it's zone, it's zone for what it is.
Yes.
RE ten.
And it's, it's defined what you can do.
But RE ten is what, it's only several horses and, and several cows, if that's.
Well, so many. Okay. My point was is that you can go there, anybody can go there, and it's defined already, we don't need to. Try to redefine it because it's already defined, so you can do what it says you can do based on RE ten.
Then the second part of that was is that when the applicant came in and, and submitted his zone change request. Um, there was some discussion with planning commission about whether or not this should be RE ten or whether it should be ag. Et cetera, and the discussion went back and forth and, and the applicant wrote on the bottom AG ag use garden. However, the application is not for agricultural use, the application is for RE real estate one ten.
This is, this is understandable. I have no intention to build a house, I just wanna make that clear.
I don't care what your intentions are, I want it very, very clear that you are not being zoned for agricultural use.
I know, and I may find that I have to go back and, and request a zone for ag use, I think it'll kind of.
That is your objective.
Let's do this.
What, what, what's important though is, is, is to note that. That when I'm planting trees out there and I'm doing my garden work out there, that if somebody doesn't come and tell me I need to have a permit. To run my tractor and, and, and sell my, you know, sell my corn or, or plant my flowers or whatever. Uh, that's pretty important, but, uh, because the ag use, the ag use is not for, I know the, the, basically during the planning commission. The big difference was in the community uproar, I think, appears to be either with piggies, which is, I understand about piggies and smells and conducts and whatever kind of stuff. But, um, with the commercial use and the traffic and the excess traffic that that would generate, which was never my. It's not my intent to use it for commercial except to, a basic commercial like, um, having a, uh, the neighbors. Um, texts or whatever, whoever wants to participate and let them know the carrots are ready and they can go come get carrots and come get. Different kinds of stuff like that, but I don't need to run as a business to make money, that's not, that's not, I don't need money.
Well, I've had this conversation, both you and your wife, and, and I appreciate it working with you guys, but I, I just, this has been a confusing. Uh, application and, and the residents in the area have gotten mixed information. Uh, so it's my job to make sure that this, that it is clearly understood what you're fighting for.
Yes.
And while you talk about commercial, this is not a commercial zone property.
It's not a commercial zone.
While you talk about texting your neighbors and telling them that the carrots are ready, that's not a commercial product either. But if you were to extract and package your fruits and vegetables that you grow and you load them in any kind of vehicle, including a cart.
They need to be.
Not to be funny, then you become an agricultural product and you are not permitted to do so.
Wait, if you said, you said if I pack.
Package.
You mean like in a, like, um, package with a label. When you say any form whatsoever, people that can their fruit, pack their stuff up in there.
Let me, let me be very clear when I say, let me, let me readjust a little bit. If you take your land and you use it for the purpose of growing. Agriculture product or garden product or tree product or fruit product, any of the way you're describing.
Yes.
And you package it for the purp- purpose of distribution for sale.
Then it's ag.
Then it becomes a commercial product.
So it has to be rezoned as ag if we want.
You would have to be rezoned.
I totally get, this is, in fact, it, it, it discounts those gardens, which is a Mediterranean garden, what we're doing. Is, it's light on the food and it's mostly for, it, it's, it's just mostly for community use if anything. It's not like you could have a volume enough to, maybe for some local restaurants like I talked about. And that, that is really was a nice use for it. I've never successfully done that with any of the gardens I've built. I've got tens of thousands of pounds that fall to deer and to depending on what animals are in the country that they're in. But, but, um, but in, in any effect, it's always a beneficial and blessing for the community. So I put tons of money into it, I have never made any money on it.
Uh, I.
Well, I did, I did make six hundred bucks, I did have a fruit stand sale once.
I don't disagree with you, Mr. Wilson, that's not my point. My point is that there's been confusion in the community as to what you are actually doing with this property.
You will find out that that is from, that is only from the residents that don't come and talk.
I, I don't care where the source is, my job is to clarify the information. And my job is to clarify that this is not an agricultural product and you are not permitted to package and distribute for commercial or sale usage. If you wanna call Mr. Sayer and say, I got twenty extra bundles of carrots, so I'd like to trade you pure tomatoes. You're welcome to do so.
On my way.
Yeah, but one, and, and, and sharing with no charge anyways.
But that is, that is, that is not a commercial product.
Right.
And we'll make it very, very clear.
I understand. I, I can, I can agree with that, and if enter, if ever we contemplate that, I, I, I didn't know if you guys. Seen me in the last year doing my little ten by fifteen test garden, you realize I don't move very quickly. So, in the chance that it could even be something that had enough fruit on it in a decade or two. We can discuss having a agricultural transition.
You're welcome to come in and apply for a zone change anytime you'd like, just like anybody else in here.
I.
But in today's application, you're, you're applying for an RE one ten.
Yes, yes, I understand.
Okay.
RE ten.
RE ten, sorry.
Yeah, the other, uh, issue that I, I just wanna throw out there is that I have no intention of building a house. So if he has no intention of building a house, we kick people off their property, their parking tractors and equipment like that. You can't have a, uh, storage, you know, like a shipping container, any of that kinda stuff on a lot that does not have. A building of it or a house.
It's a ten acre lot, that's, that's the thing that, that we have to use reasoning, common sense, godly reasoning, common sense.
I'm just talking about ordinances, I'm not, we didn't draw out the, the common sense out the window, I'm talking about the ordinances we're in writing.
I understand.
We can't do that, we're up there chasing people off.
We'll be changing ordinances, that's not a problem, it will be done.
Mr. Wilson?
But, but what I'm saying is, is, is I have, you know, I have twelve acres up there, I have the adjacent. Um, basically, almost two acres, and that's where we're building out, that's what we want for the permit to finish for that house. Uh, my wife has that all planned out, and this is, if they're attached to each other, this, it will naturally flow into it, it'll just be beautiful.
They are not attached, you're sure.
They're not, they're not attached together, I understand.
They're independent, tax out, partial ID number.
I understand, and if this acreage was anywhere but on Purple Sage under some particular people's houses that like to complain. If it was in any of the other ones where they're stacking cars and stuff and everything on open lots, because they have the right to use their land by state law. Um, you know, this area here, I understand your restrictions on this.
If it's RE, you don't have the right to just use it however you want.
That's why I'm letting you know that I'm gonna be building a farm there. So now, when we finish, but let's say I've got my tractors there, my tractors can be parked next door on my, in, in, in their garage. Because I've got the one point.
Once you've been granted a permit for your home, you can bring in a container.
I don't have any plans on bringing containers, but, but, uh, I don't like it here. But, but the, the thing is, is my permit is five minutes, is five months in now, I'm waiting five months now for my building permit, permit's been ready and ready to. For about two months, but once I get signed, if you guys, if really need to go through semantics. Which it looks like a lot of this happens around here, it's not hard to drive it seventy-five feet over onto the other lot.
We would appreciate if you do that.
Yeah, it's not semantics.
Approve my, approve my permit, let's get that permit approval to order, and I'll get that taken care of, I can readjust things. But, um, you know, I just want you guys to know with clear intent what I'm doing. I don't do anything underhandedly, I don't make up, you know, stories or anything like that, I'm truly building something beautiful that's gonna benefit the community. So, sorry for a little bit for.
I appreciate that, and again, I think all of us have stated before, and I think the public has stated before that they welcome the beauty of the garden and, and et cetera items. Uh, our job isn't here to go, to address the, the, the cement, the, the, the aesthetics. Of what you're doing or what you're not doing, whether it's an Israeli garden or a southern garden.
Right.
Uh, you are currently in violation on your property, you have been notified that you've been in violation, you have not taken.
Technically, you've got that, whoever did that violation.
You have not.
Got that wrong.
You have not, you have not taken any actions to correct that violation, we encourage you to do so. As I did so in your letter, we encourage you to come in and get that taken care of, please.
Okay. Um, as far as the permit goes, that, the permit process, so I can move that stuff over, I just need your help to, to get that done, everything.
You can't store trailers on your property.
You cannot put a trailer on my property.
I said you cannot store trailers on your property. You have currently five trailers, a camper and a couple of tractors.
Uh, well, okay, I took that back for capture.
Okay, um, let's, let's, let's hang on a second. Let's get in and invite you to come into the office and sit down, let's get that resolved, you and I can get that resolved very, very easily, okay? This is not, this is not my place for, it has nothing to do with your permit, this is not the place for, you have an application for, for zone changes. Let's move on with that if you don't mind.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions about the zone change? Anybody wanna make a motion? I will make a motion that we approve the zone change as is for real states are ten. Uh, I would like to make notation that in the bottom section of the application, under the reason for the request. Is agricultural use and garden, that the word ag and you be removed. From the application, that this is no way in consideration of approving this property for their agricultural usage. And it is for exactly what it is, single family residential zone, RE ten. For a second?
I second.
Vote beginning with Paul.
Hi.
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 Hi, vote carries five to zero, congratulations on your zone change. Thanks for coming in, appreciate it. And I did speak to. David, I did speak to Lalet, I was talking to her yesterday, I told her we were working on getting that, that process. There, there were some challenges and we, I think we're getting close to getting it wrapped up, okay? Okay, one of them, six discussion of possible actual preliminary plat application for lot AV dash one. Dash three, dash five, dash two eleven applicant Allred Heber. Mister Allred here, but tonight. Mike's not here either, or sorry, Carl's not here either.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, you're online, Carl, there you are, get back here to it. Okay, Mister Rasmussen, who is online? Correct?
Yes, sir.
Who are the representative for? Heber Allred, is that correct?
Right.
This project has gone through planning commission and JUC and was advanced. From planning commission to the town council with recommendation of approval. I would be like to open the discussion by going to the zone map. Or sorry, the, uh, not the zone map, but the, uh, the, the map itself, the preliminary map. Couple of things that jump out right away, um. There has been a question brought before the town as to. Whether or not this project. Uh, was properly addressed in the, in the. General Amendment Plan, because it does not follow the general amendment plan precisely. Uh, the, the concern level of the, of the town resident was that there was a large enough. Impact or large enough effect to the general plan that it should require a general plan amendment. Uh, occur. I have spoken to legal, uh, it is legal's interpretation. That our general plan is not an ordinance and that it is a, uh, guideline. Uh, it does say, however, that if there is a significant impact, that there should be an adjustment to the general amendment plan. Um, I would suggest to council that we are in the process of redoing and updating our general minimum plan with sunrise as we speak. Uh, I'm, I'm, I, I, the question is, is does a hundred and forty-seven acre parcel constitute a large enough? Impact on a general amendment plan to, to call for that, even though it's legally not required. Isn't enough even considered? That's the first question. Second question is, is that, that I wanna point out is that through final plat. And through engineers redline changes, we are gonna ask the applicant Carl to make a couple of adjustments on some of the roadway. Uh, access points of the subdivision because it's not providing access for some of the perimeter properties. And we can work this out through our final plat through the two engineers, but it shouldn't be on, on your radar, okay?
Hey, you, you know which property, the, the ones to the west or which ones?
To the, to the west. Um, on, um, well, the east is governed by Main Street. You see that Kurt Road?
Yeah, I see that.
So they dump out on the Main Street there, but there is some questions and then, and we'll get into that. When we actually do this traffic study on that, there's, there's only three entrance points on the Main Street. Uh, and granted, a lot of that is commercial, uh, so we will work through some of those details and bring it. Although we'll bring it back to council for their, for their private review to, to take a look at and, and, because we, we have some challenge with that. But the big question is, is do we feel like that this is a large enough project to constitute a. Adjustment to or amendment to our general plan. Prior to approval.
Well, at what point, you know, what number of lots, what number of, when it can watch, do you think that? When, I mean, if it's not in, if it's not in an ordinance.
These are, these are.
It's not, it's, it's not the number of units, it's a hundred and forty-seven acres. Against the twenty-one thousand acres of the town or how many is, is in the OST zone.
Well, we, we haven't updated that, uh, the plan yet, but I know that's always been our intent is.
They're working on.
Coyote, I finished on Coyote, that that would remain residential and that's what this plan does. And on Main Street it'd be commercial, and they've tucked the residential behind what looks like future commercial and. What they're trying to do. Which is totally a question, I like the way that they're not, or all of the, uh, traffic on Main Street, it's, uh. Serviced off of a front of drone, shall we call it? With a couple of the three entrances, four entrances on the Main Street. But it's, um, I think it's, uh, in keeping with what our intent's always been out there as far as residential. I'm not crazy about the half acre lots myself out there.
I'm not either.
I think that the density is higher than what, um, I always thought that Coyote and out that area would be.
Like a five acre.
A low, low density kind of a thing.
Right, I do have a problem with that myself, but the other thing, just looking at this map. Um, that roadway that goes on that curve. That, some people fly around the curb, I mean, it's a dirt road right now, but, I mean, there's no visibility in that.
Are you talking about the access from the residential homes?
Yeah, on Main Street, right on, right on, right in the curb on Main Street, you gotta go broken entrance and exit, right, right in the curb.
Carl, can you hear that?
I see that as a problem with, um, with oncoming and going traffic. And that curb off of Main Street.
Pretty white, sweeping curb.
And I think you have good visibility. I traveled it, I traveled that road quite a bit, so.
Carl, can you hear Mike?
Yeah, I heard Mike, uh, his, his concern is, his, his concern's legitimate, but. Uh, that can all be taken care of with, uh, when we do proper turn lanes and do the, the site. There's gonna be able to be proper sight distance, what we need to do is just adjust things so that. Uh, you know, you have your stop sign, you have your turn lane so that. If all of a sudden someone wants to turn left off of Main Street, we've got a median there that cars can get by and not. Run into someone's rear end, you know what I mean?
Yeah, can that have a center lane, you know, left turn lane?
Yeah, I, I'd recommend that down this Main Street, just have a, just have a median. Uh, just, it'd be so simple to do at each of these inter intersections.
And, and our engineer has, has asked same, some of the same questions, so. Uh, that's why I stated that at, at final plat, we would wanna make sure that our engineer is comfortable that that traffic. Study, if for like a better term, has been addressed, so if you make sure that's on your radar, because I promise you, we're gonna bring it to you.
I just, um. On the, on the density, yeah, we just talked street a little bit, you have Seer Point and they've got a lot of half acre lots there and, you know, it's. It turned out well there, but it's, uh, it is a higher density than what originally planned, but at the same point, you just. You go up Seer Point, it doesn't look bad.
Hey, Carl, you.
Yes, sir.
Because of this map, Paul, you know off the top of your head what your overall density is on.
Well, you got, you've got, you've got a hundred of the half acre units and then you've got, I believe it's a hundred and. Thirty or a hundred and forty of the, uh, what's called the tourist. Uh, correct me with that zoning, it's tourist wa, uh, tourist, um. Uh, correct me with that zoning. It's tourist wa- uh, tourist uh, resort. Huh? Say again.
Tourist commercial.
Yeah, tourist commercial. Thank you. So tourist commercial units is what I wanted to say. Sorry, TC.
What's your total acreage?
Huh?
What's your total acreage here?
Well, if you include the hotel and the and the uh, if you include the two hotels, the grocery store, uh, you know, that commer- just that whole commercial center there, you're probably you're almost half and half commercial slash residential, because we're doing a big old open space on the southwest end that's going to turn into a park and and manage and treat all the wastewater there and uh, where we can reuse it uh, for keeping all our stuff green on that southwest.
Let me rephrase my question. Do you know what your overall density per acre is? D U A?
Oh, per the density per acre? Here, I'll tell you.
Density units per acre overall.
I'll tell you real quickly. I just gotta do the math on it. So one, four, and five. Sorry, I'm clicking buttons on the computer. So you're going to be on that one. You're going to be uh, you're going to be one point seven five units an acre.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. That was what I was trying to get to was uh, overall density, D U A, density units per acre.
I got a question for um, say uh, average size lot in your subdivision.
I don't know what the average size is.
When you say an half acre.
The average size is going to be probably twenty-three, twenty-two thousand square foot.
Carl, typically, uh, if we were quote in in town in Hurricane, where eight, ten thousand square foot, eleven thousand square foot lots, density usually runs three and a half to four units per acre. Is that correct?
It's for quarter acre lots, it's about three point five units per acre, three point two. And then when you get to higher density, what you would be the six thousand, eight thousand square foot lots, it's up in the four uh, four to five units per acre range.
You're familiar with my subdivision of Cordero?
Yeah.
We're eight, we're eight, eight to ten thousand square foot lots.
Yeah.
With no old base, and we're three point five units per acre overall density. For one point seven five, my point is in comparison to what they do down in Hurricane, which is the last place in the world that I ever want to live, and the last place that I want to live up here, see this place developed from my own personal perspective, have that kind of homes, one point seven five is still a low number was my was my point. In in comparison to other developments around around the county. That was my only point. Um, any more questions about this? Still, I will, I will tell you that I have spoken with Richard um, about this project, and I in no way whatsoever want anybody to take anything from this other than we're having conversations. But uh, I've been working to try and do some calculations to show Richard where, in my opinion, he's more profitable if he goes with one to one and a half acre lots due to infrastructure cost. I've been able to feel like I've moved that needle a little bit, and I'm 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 optimistic about this much that he'll come back and change the density and reduce it just just for sake of of conversation. But we are here not to to approve this this preliminary plat as half acre lots at one point seven five units per acre overall density. Do we have a motion?
Too tight.
I just think it's in the, it's in a different neighborhood where everything around there is five and ten acres, and it's uh, I I can see where, okay, but we're heading towards highway more, you know? Back behind there, we can be the larger lots. And uh, if there's any way in the world we could push these to one acre, that'd be I'd be saying yes to it on one acre. I just didn't say yes to leave my half acre, because I think they've really laid this out well. And um, it's like I said, it is exactly right there towards Main Street. That's usually where your higher density will come into play anyway, is closer to that road noise and and the highway. But uh, those people that live over there, they're not going to have to the increase in traffic and things like that.
The people out on Coyote?
Yeah.
Mr. Fisher, you live out on Coyote. What's your opinion?
I think it should be larger lots.
Good.
Sorry.
Larger lots.
I think there should be larger lots. I think it should be at least one acre.
One acres.
I can't see how people would want to live behind that.
Does anybody else live out there?
Most every other has five to ten acres.
Anybody else live out there?
See, I'm here. Anyway, I I would feel better at one acre, but uh, I can see why they want to do it. It's a, it's also a financial thing. It's uh, but I think the one acre lot's going to be over a better price than it will pay for itself anyway.
Then I'm going to make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat subject to the adjustment to one acre lots if the builder is willing to do so.
I'd like to look at it, though.
Yeah, I haven't had time to study this thing out at all, and.
What?
We've been a half two weeks.
Well, I still haven't seen enough information.
Anyway, I don't.
Do I have a motion? Do we have a second? We do not have a second, so the motion is not carried. So do we have a motion to either table? Or do we have a motion to deny?
I am making motion. We table this. Go back to the applicant and see if we can get one acre lots out of this.
I will second that, Marty.
Paul?
Hi.
I, 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 five zero. Carl, if you'd let your app, your your client know that we would like to visit with him with him to to discuss uh, the possibility of taking this one acre lots. Thank you. Thanks for that. Item is tabled. It's on our next meeting. Reports, recommendations, and announcements. Dale Harris is not here today. I'm going to report for Dale that uh, he was able to drain the tank today and make the initial repairs. He's got to make some more repairs on Monday uh, to the water tank. I'm going to readdress again the information that was provided to the public uh, that there was a quote massive hole. Mike, say is that right, Mike? There was a massive hole.
Sign out your fist. It's in writing.
In writing that there was a massive hole in that tank that was the size of large enough to put your fist through. We reported to the community that uh, that this information in the in the view of the council and the mayor's office was a reckless endangerment of our community. Uh, it was circumvented the the message that was given to the community by knocking on the doors uh, to uh, inform people that that quote massive hole was about to implode or could implode at any moment and cause harm and damage and possible loss of life, was done so without the consent of the water district. It was done without consent of the mayor. It was done without consent of the council. It was done without consent of the water superintendent. Um, I have asked our city attorney to uh, investigate the process, and it appears that the only people that are that are cert- that are allowed to, that that the fire department is not for it, not permitted to issue a state of emergency with the exception of an ongoing fire, and they're not committed to even state that as an emergency town, emergency uh, systems are to be established by the mayor's office and uh, and possibly the council or she can be some question about whether or not council is involved in that, but it it appears it can only come from the mayor's office. I'm going to give the example of one home that was that was visited by uh, Captain Walters and Chief Zog that had two young boys, eleven, twelve year old ages in there. They were, as it was reported to me by by their father, that uh, that they knocked on their door and and made them aware of this massive hole uh, that, by the way, is not big enough to put your finger in, um, then that their lives were in danger. However, if those lives were in danger, I question why they did not extract or evacuate the the residents and the children from the home as opposed to going off and leaving it there. Um, I I view that as being reckless. I view that as being endangerment uh, by insinuating a riot or the definition of going into a theater and screaming fire when it doesn't exist. Um, I'm sure that most of the town is aware, for those of you who are not aware, uh, Mr. Zog and Mr. Uh, Walters uh, was terminated from their positions in the fire department earlier this week. It was not the sole reason why they were terminated because of this, but uh, it was certainly uh, one of the 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 larger reasons why. Um, and that's my report from the water department. Okay. Uh, public comments. We'd like to open up a section. There's time now to public comments if you have any. If you would remember that there you need to keep your public comments to the agenda items. Yes, man. Please come forward and state your name and address, please, because we don't know who you are.
Hi, I'm Robin. Robin Hendrick. Um, I live at one, seven, five, eight North Cartland Drive. Um, and I have specific water rights training and concerns with um, the agreement that the town council has decided to engage with um, the Jefferson Canyon Canyon development. Um, there's no stipulation in that agreement that the applicant must acquire a water right of a certain priority date. Priority dates are very important in the viability of the water right. There's definitely a chance that state engineer, as he or she has done in the past, um, will essentially negate any water rights of a certain date. Um, and so it's really important that that priority date is as low as possible. There's no condition in that agreement that they need to acquire a water right um, of a low priority date. So that's point number one. Um, number two is that um, this application or this contract is written puts the town in a precarious position if um, we are unable to meet that yield in the Nocifer, whatever source that we are um, that we will be um, using for that one hundred acre foot water right. But we will have a contractual obligation to supply one hundred acre feet to the Jefferson Canyon Development. Do you understand that that concern?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Um, and so there is no condition written in this agreement that if we are unable to yield safely yield sustainably that one hundred acre feet in the future, um, we will be again contractually contractually obligated to provide that water at the expense of the existing residents, which I am concerned about because I am an existing resident.
Me too.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Um, so those are my concerns with the Jefferson Canyon contract, and I don't believe that this the um, the town should sign this contract as written. Um, there needs to be significant revisions to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody online? Would you like to comment? I have a few more people walking in the door. We're in public comment. Would you have anything you'd like to come up and say, guys? Nothing? Okay, we'll close the public comment section of the meeting then. No request for a closed session?
No.
I'm making a German, I'm making a motion that we adjourn. Your second?
Second.
Sorry, Paul?
Hi.
Marty?
Hi.
I?
Hi.
We adjourn. What's her name? Robin, what? Kevin, did you catch her name here? Robin, Robin, you know her last name?
I don't, but I mean, I just have my address.
Yeah. Hey, can you hit the feedbacks, John?